After all. I'd like to welcome the Village of Weston Board of Trustees meeting to order. If you'll stand for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Welcome. Okay, a roll call. Sherry?
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Manel.
Here.
White.
Here.
John.
Here.
Ziegler.
I don't believe he's on. John, you there?
He just came in.
Okay.
Yep, just got on again.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mark, and then for the next item. I have some to just hand that to me.
Okay.
And then these are, these are the written ones. I made copies of the emails I gave him.
Well, and that's what I did too, so I'll see if I've got replication. And then I'll just hand them all to you.
Okay.
Right?
Yep, perfect.
All right, so roll call's done, public comments. How we're gonna do this public comments, and it doesn't seem like too many, but if you want to just state your name and address for the record. And we'd like to keep it to about five minutes. And also, if something has been said, or if there's a topic that has been talked about, we'd rather not have the repetition unless you have a very different, you know, point of view or a different topic. So I'm just gonna start off with the top one here. Jim, you got a note here on the municipal center?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Hudson, Alt 502 Arrow Street, Weston.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's by my understanding that this evening the board is gonna discuss and or decide on how to move forward with the proposed municipal center project. I 100% agree that there are certainly deficiencies in both office space and most definitely the public works areas, which which need to be updated and addressed. I have several concerns on how the current proposal, which is brought forward in the agenda here for us by Cooney Architects, has addressed these concerns. The original contract from the architect is dated February 3 of 2020, included an 87,160 square foot facility, but the price tag not to exceed $12 million. The current proposed project exceeds that square footage. It also exceeds the budget by $3.4 million. That's before we added the alternates for HVAC and there were some other plus and minus wish list things. But significantly more expensive and it's not the same product. It's not what we asked Cooney for. It's not what we signed for. So I have a big problem there with, we didn't get what we paid for. We didn't, we entered into a contract for a $12 million project for 87,160 and that's not what we got. Okay? Furthermore, this entire project was designed before the current global pandemic situation we're in. A couple notes on that. One, the cost of materials has changed significantly, which affect their budget, increased the cost of things, completely understand that. But something that wasn't looked at in February of 2020 is the world and village staff work differently. In fact, members of this boardroom have met virtually. We've got one right now that's not physically in this room. So do we need an 87,000 square foot building to still conduct? Meeting in person. So I think that's something that didn't go into the equation in February of 20. The last thing that I'd like to mention is financing. While the current interest rates are great right now and now is the time to borrow money if we need to borrow money, I agree 100%. I think the actual financial impact hasn't been to to the taxpayers for this new increased budget dollar, hasn't been accurately or transparently portrayed. I was speaking with a trustee here just before this meeting and they were unaware that that the current, and I think it happened in the finance meeting right before this, that in the FAQ section of the website that did a very good job of trying to be transparent, that was based on the original numbers, not based on the numbers that just came back from the bits just a few weeks ago. So I would just ask that the board strongly consider going back to the drawing board and reconsidering the project's scope based on current market price, working remotely, virtual attendance, and not approving this project in its current state this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I'm just gonna go in the order I have that you hand them to me. So under public comments, I have a letter here from Andy Sutton, Weston resident. He's unable to attend tonight, but he wants to just go on record that he is in support of opening the proposed routes to ATV, UTV traffic, which is farther down our our agenda tonight. Today, I received this today and I shared it with Sharon Keith, Paul Schrader from the village. He's, let's see, I believe he is a no. Do you want me to read these?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Maloney, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, however, I do want to voice my opinion on the pending vote for a new village facility. To be honest, I do not know whether the village needs a new facility. Village employees have made pleas for a new facility based on a number of issues. At best, these points may be accurate, however, at its worst, these may be embellishing issues based on issues. Regardless, this vote, and it appears you will vote to approve and raise property taxes without sufficient input from your constituents. It may be true that this does not need to go to a referendum because some tactics were used to have this building qualified under public works. However, this appears more like a dodge to avoid public approval than a legitimate use of village statutes. Doing it without referendum may be legal, but it does not make it right. This action also appears to continue a legacy of ineptitude by village leaders to do what is advantageous to connected individuals. Case in point, the horrid lack of enforcing village building codes in the early 2000s and not the citizens. We are not your personal piggy bank, however, money does need spending on projects that add to the tax base and improve infrastructure, water, utility, roads. I strongly urge you to vote no tonight and instead urge your colleagues to do the right thing and bring this to the voters in the form of a referendum. Respectfully, Paul Schrader. Okay. Let's see. Dino Corvino. Let's see, I, I'm just gonna, there was a little back and forth there with him. Let's see. Mark, I want you to know that I support the building of a new village hall. I think the time has come to move us from a village who has a building in a cinder block hockey rink warming house to something that reflects our level of success and our strategic plan. I promised I would never do this, but these are his words and I think just a little competitive, but I do not want to get shown up by Rothschild anymore. Seriously, what is next? Schofield Building, something new, and then we are on the bottom. Nobody's, okay, we are Weston and the fiscal argument for the investment speaks for itself. This is public comments, so I'm not gonna make any reference. So that's, that's a for. The other one was against. Let's see here. Gail Marshall. Let's see, Friday, April 16. Please read my public comment as I am unable to attend the meeting in person. Are there challenges for the current staff with the current building? Yes. Is the proposed building reasonable in size? No. The building committee recommendation to build a facility to house future hires over the next 50 years is not reasonable. Can you think of one private enterprise that built their facility for their needs 50 years in the future? I cannot. Trustees are looking at the good of the seen project while not considering the unseen things not able to be chosen from asking for more of the limited resources of its residents. What local spending at restaurants, charity giving, et cetera, will residents have to forego to pay for these additional taxes of this project of 2,600 on a 150,000 dollar home over the course of the bond? Those are the unseen costs to our local community. The village board should be upfront with the residents on the total cost of the project, land, engineering fees, building construction, bond financing costs, et cetera. It is disingenuous to only talk about the building construction cost. Lenders of mortgages, mortgages are required by law to provide truth in lending documents. While this is not exactly a mortgage, it is very similar. Shouldn't the residents be informed about the all inclusive cost of the general obligation bonds proposed? The Board of Trustees should seek the consent of the government before approving such a large project. That has not been done. Gail Marshall. Bob and Vicky Erdman received this Friday or Saturday. Dear Mark, the new Weston Municipal Center was forced upon us with virtually no input and the project must be halted immediately. The proposed 40-bed rehab hospital in Wausau has a price tag of $25 million, which by comparison plus the $15 million tag of the new municipal center in the excessive range. Bob and Vicky Erdman. Steve Rousch. This note is in response to information regarding the proposed new Weston Municipal Center. At a time when our federal and state taxes are probably increasing, it doesn't seem wise to do something that significantly increases our municipal tax. I am not a construction person, but I'm hearing that construction material have gone up significantly. Interest rates may be going up as well. It looks like there's anticipation that the staff needed to run the municipality will double. I haven't heard where the rationale for that comes from. I've been involved in two different building projects, a church and a business. In both cases, it was both, it was felt both would grow a lot. Due to the costs involved, both building plans were downsized. In either case, did the church or business grow as much as anticipated? In both cases, the people deciding on the plan had to pay for it and made good decisions. Although I realize that the members of the board making the decision are doing the best they can, I feel the Weston community should have a say by means of a referendum. We moved from Wausau to Weston over 10 years ago, partly because of more reasonable taxes in Weston. Since then, we've seen our taxes gradually continue to increase and now you're planning on even a bigger increase. This may cause us to consider moving. Steve Rousch. I'm begging you for that pop. Can I, okay. I guess I gotta dry mouth here. Eric, thank you. Paul Schrader. I did Paul Schrader, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so these are mine. Sherry. I did not do this one, so that one's done. I'll put it here anyway. Jim and Cindy Russell. I responded that I'll, I'll share this email to the full Board of Trustees. In view of the fact that taxes are going to be significantly increased, the decision to authorize this massive spending project should be put into a referendum. The taxpayers need to vote on it sincerely. Jim and Cindy Russell, Village of Weston. This is just another double, Dino Corvino. So I just, I did the ones off my computer today. I just didn't know how they were gonna get here. All right, last one. What's your pop then?
No.
Okay. Let's see, from, very small attempt at humor. Josh Finke, Village resident. Mark, I have been hearing some feedback about the new building, mostly from one of the folks running for a trustee spot. And I have been keeping up with it a bit, reading meeting minutes, et cetera. From a business owner in the village, I support it for what that is worth. Spend the money and do it right the first time. The village isn't getting smaller and it needs are not going to reduce over the next 50 years. It might sting for a few years, but it's worth it. We had a lot of the same comments about the public safety building in Rim Mountain because it had empty offices initially. Now, just 15 years later, it's full. Again, just my two cents, not sure how much it means or how much feedback you have had. The same 20 people are going to make the noise if you spend 1 million or 20 million. Thanks, Josh. That's what we have. And then these all go back to you, Sherry, right? All right, anybody else in the audience or anybody on social media or Zoom? Anybody have their hand up, Nate? Okay. All right, moving on. Minutes from previous meetings, number four, 2000, excuse me, February 17, 2021, Board of Trustees Special Meeting.
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by John.
Four, five, and six.
Four, five, and six?
Yes.
Second by Ermeling. Anything on the, on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number seven, Building Committee. We're just gonna do the blues. Building Committee?
Move to acknowledge.
Move to all or just this one?
Move to acknowledge, seven, 15, 16.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Yizhong. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports from departments. Keith, you wanna add anything even though you're not blued out?
I guess I really don't. I apologize. I didn't get a report in the packet, but I guess my weeks seem to be consumed by the building discussion. So unless anybody asks questions for me.
Okay. Clerks. Everybody see that or anything you wanna add, Sherry?
I have nothing to add unless you have questions for me.
Go on. Finance for Jessica. Everybody seen her report? Anybody?
I just have a comment. I go through the board review train. It's two hours and 46 minutes in case anybody wants to know.
Oh, I thought you said two hours and 14 minutes.
14 minutes.
I thought you wrote two, two hours and 46 minutes.
Well, the writing supersedes my memory, so. And it's not the same one we saw last time.
Okay. Oh, it's different?
Yes.
I can't wait.
Nice.
All right. Let's see, Fire EMS doesn't have one, but I think Chief is here or maybe? Yep, nothing?
Nothing really to add.
Okay.
That is cool.
Okay, thank you, man. Park and Rec? Not here, but. Yep. Anybody have any questions for Sean?
I just wanted to give him a comment. I had some neighbors that do a lot of bike riding.
Yep.
And they were complaining about the bike path along the river there, that it's how bad it was. And I was gonna mention it and then she stopped by yesterday and told me what a beautiful job they did on fixing that bike path. And she said whatever kind of material they used, it's perfect for bike riding. So I don't know what kind of special material you used. You know? She said it was smaller rocks or something and it was easier to ride on. I don't know.
Yes, thank you. They did do limestone screenings on there. They locked together better.
Okay, I kinda, I was gonna go down that way, but I didn't have time because I thought that sounded, the way she was describing it, kinda like what was put on the Mountain Bay Trail there years ago.
Kinda, yeah, just darker rock.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Very pleased. She met people and they talked about it, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You know, it's actually kinda funny. You get a comment and maybe you misplaced it or you didn't call it quick enough. And then all of a sudden you get the comment back from the same resident that it got fixed and you're going, how did that happen? You know?
Because staff is like.
It's just, it's just normal, in normal routine. Yeah, so it's kinda neat, so.
I did explain to her that, you know, they had the parts, you know.
Okay.
Stretch, so.
25, Planning and Development. Anything for Jen? Jen, anything to add? She shaking her head, no?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, thank you. Police, number 26, Chief.
Real quickly, for the month of March, we responded to 1,671 calls for service. Of those, 1,224 were in the village. Brief staffing update with the recent resignation of Officer Kumua, who was on our agency for nine years. We currently have three openings. Or who's going into something outside of law enforcement, a different career path. We offered one of those positions contingent on some testing to a candidate, but we now have two openings without any viable applicants.
I think that's, that's how it's gonna start looking.
I think it's a sign of the future.
Yeah, I meant to say that I couldn't think of it fast enough.
Chief, if we can, well, I'll connect with you afterwards about the potential. With recruiting with Southeast Asian individuals from all across the state and who's interested in going to law enforcement, I'll connect you with that.
Perfect, thank you. Cool, lives in my neighborhood, so.
It'd be great.
I see her walking around all the time with her kids and coming over for Halloween and stuff and, you know, it's a great family.
If you see her, thank her for her service.
Oh, I will. I, she just got accolades on Citizen or I don't know exactly the name, but for what she's been dealing with. Her abuse and stuff, she was wrecked, I mean, from the whole year and I actually went backwards. I think she thought I was half nuts and she grabbed onto her little girl because she's really a wild one. But I just, I congratulate her because she did just a great job. She's so nice. All right, 27, Public Works. Anything for Michael?
No, I guess just one thing. I did put a summary of all of our street maintenance bid items just kind of in the front there. Those are later on in the packet, but if I don't be beneficial, they have this kind of overarching view before all those items are taken individually.
Okay.
So I, long story short, all the bids together came in under what the initial estimate was. And then our street, our water main flushing is scheduled to begin this week. We held off today with some of the colder temperatures and the flurries that were starting to show up. Hopefully it warms up to the going rate.
Yeah, you know, Director Wodolski, I'm still blaming you. I mean, we said, you said that we could, what, three board meetings ago? Still holding that against you?
Yep, well, the salt set is full, so.
There you go.
Hopefully we don't need it.
All right. 28, Technology, Nate?
Nothing to add to my report.
Anything for Nate? Okay. Work Product Transmittals.
Move to acknowledge items 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28.
I stand corrected, move by White, second, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Work Product Transmittals, number 29, March Building Permits. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37.
Motion to approve all of those by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On, on any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolutions, number 39. Resolution number 2021-008 for special assessments for street and utility improvements for the Ryan Street Apache Lane Utility Connection Project.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2021-008.
Motion by White, second by Manel. Anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number 40, Resolution number 2021-009 to approve the Conditional Use Permit Amendment by Nicolay Lumber Company for the East Gate Apartments.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by White. On the discussion?
I just have a question. I noticed that the Plan Commission recommended denial as they wanted the project complete as approved.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I can address this. So this came last October. The amendment came before Plan Commission. Plan Commission denied it. Nicolay then appealed it and it went to Village Board at that point. Village Board's opinion, I'm sorry, motion, action at that point was to direct staff to work with the applicant to come forward with a compromise. And so this is the compromise that staff has worked with the applicant to bring the property closer to where it was supposed to be.
They are replacing.
So, so Emily, we have a recommendation by staff to move forward with this, correct?
Correct.
You're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, any other questions?
Okay, so staff recommends that the planning.
No, 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 this is, we.
Initially, they said.
Yes, and then. Board sent it back to staff to take care of it.
Figure it out.
And now they're figuring it out.
Yeah, because I know they're, have they done the curb yet?
That is in progress.
Yeah, they'll handle that.
Mr. President, I have one more question. I guess would it be proper for us to actually send it back to Plan Commission to review first?
No.
It's not necessary.
No.
Then it does not have to go back to Plan Commission. They appealed to you as the board, so it's in your hands.
Yep. Okay. We did not have a unanimous vote either, so just saying. Okay. So any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Unfinished business, none. New business, number 41. Discussion and possible action on Building Committee Recommendation on Bids for the Construction of the Village Municipal Facility. Yep, I'm sorry. Pete?
I guess tonight we have with us our Chair of the Building Committee, Martin Bean. I thought maybe you would want to have him address the board.
You wanna address the board?
Well, to the recommendations from the committee.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Just briefly outline how we want to proceed with this tonight for our, from our part. I'll give a very brief summary of the recommendations that we're bringing forward from the Building Committee to you as a board. Then we had planned to have Administrator Donner address the financing issues. That's probably still relevant, even though the Finance Committee went through that in pretty much detail. But for everyone else's benefit, we'll still call on Administrator to review the financial situation for the project. And then for the third part, we'd like to have our architect, Mr. Wallenkamp, come up and go through the alternates. And specifically, he will address one of the alternates that we're recommending because there are some options with that alternate. So we'll get to that in greater detail as we go on. So first of all, the committee, after, after a lot of discussion and going back and forth, looking at all the details, did recommend that we go with the basic plan for the building. There was another alternate out there that would have removed 2,000 square feet or whatever the number was. But after our discussions, we felt that it was important to build for the future. So we are recommending that we go with a base plan, which includes the extra office space for the future. And the original size for the garage is recommended by the architect. Then going to the alternates, we recommended that the, given the prices bid, we recommended taking out the salt shed and the brine building or whatever building it is the brine is in. We felt that that could be held off for a couple of years perhaps and bid out later and get a much better price. Because it's not a critical part of the, the project for the first two years. We'll still have this building. We'll still have the salt shed here. And we won't even be in this building till sometime next year. So we're thinking we could utilize the existing salt shed. So we recommend taking that out of the bid and we'll get a better price for it, probably in a couple of years when we do as a single, as a single part of the project. We did recommend, as the architect had suggested, that we add in the cost to add a repair crane. That's a big crane that can lift engines out of vehicles and things. And also vehicle lift and the mobile column lift. Again, that's, that's just equipment that raises up the big equipment so they can work underneath it. Again, that's, that's just equipment that raises up the big equipment so they can work underneath it. Uh, we recommend that we, uh, accept both those alternates. Then it got to the, um, the auto bay wash. That, that was kind of controversial for a while, but we finally settled on a compromise. There are two bays currently right now, two wash bays designed into the, into the garage. Uh, they both will hold the two vehicles or one really big vehicle. One of the bays was designed so that it could be an automatic wash function where you just pull your truck in and it's kind of like going through a car wash, which is the first step in the wash process. Then after that, it moves to the next bay and then there's a hand wash that takes place that finishes the job. We recommended, based on the costs and so forth, that we take out, uh, the automatic wash bay equipment. And we leave both of the wash bays as hand wash or manual wash operations. That means that the driver gets out with a, a special piece of equipment and literally washes off all the snow and the ice off the equipment. So those were our recommendations, um, and, uh, for the alternates, uh, so, um, HVAC is the last one and that, I'm gonna leave that up to the, to, uh, our architect to discuss the specifics, the very brief summary of what that is. There were two types of HVAC systems proposed for the building. One is a traditional, um, VAV system, HVAC, VAV. Forget what that's, volume, air, uh, something or other. Uh, but the, the other one that's, is more of a contemporary system, uh, more efficient, is the VRF system. I think that stands for, uh, volume refrigerant flow or something. And that, that's, it's a different way of handling the heat, heating and the cooling. It's more expensive, uh, but there's, there's potentially a payback for more, for greater efficiency with that system, but there is a, a significant cost to install that, that VRF system upfront. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the architect and his associates to explain that in detail. And one of the things our committee wrestled with is whether to recommend the VRF system or the VAV system. Ultimately, we said, okay, we'll recommend the VRF system, which is more expensive initially, but we want to, uh, recommend with this caveat that the board, this board should really get into the payback and efficiency details tonight. And then you decide independently which system is, is best for the, uh, for the project. So I'll leave it at that. And, um, because I suspect we're gonna have quite a bit of discussion tonight on the details. And I'll ask, um, I'll ask Administrator if he wants to now report or summarize our discussion on the, uh, financial aspects of the project. And maybe that's, maybe that's moot now after finance. I'll leave it up to you to decide.
Actually, uh, Mr. McFain, I just wanted to make sure that I had all of your recommendations right. The Building Committee recommended the fifteen point five million dollar building.
Yes.
Recommended no salt shed.
Yes.
Uh, recommended the repair crane.
Yes.
Recommended manual hand wash bay, but no automatic.
Yes.
And recommended the VRF HVAC, but want the board to get involved with all the, um, trade-offs.
Yes.
And did I miss anything?
Nope. Well, the, um,
Mobile lift.
The mobile lift structure, we, uh, we recommended that too.
Okay, thank you.
To be added in to the garage. That's it. You covered it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks for all the work on the committee. I guess just to clarify that too, I think, uh, we have on display here the, the, um, summary of the bids. The low bidder in this case for this project is, that we are talking about is from Myron Construction, based in Mina. If I have that correct, I guess. With the office also in Wausau. The base bid is the top line on this, on line one. Uh, that's the large, that's the full-size office building. Alternate two was a deduct for the smaller office. And going down the line, you see all the alternates. These were described in the cover sheet for this item. And the recommendation from the committee is in this column E, uh, which we can't, I guess you can't see the column E, but, uh, it's the third one over. There we go. Third column over and you take it down to the, uh, to line eleven. So what we are talking about relative to action on this particular item is what, what we would uh, award as a contract to the, um, to the low bidder in this case. Obviously, we're considering everything else that's done for the project, so not to confuse anything, so the contract amount that we're talking about with that alternate is fourteen million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The recommendation of the four hundred thousand dollar contingency, the other items that would be contingencies in this project are then part of what we would, what additional borrowing need we project, which is the two numbers we were talking about at finance, the fifteen point five and the fifteen million dollar number, okay? Because we've already, we've already borrowed some money for the land or part of the architect's fees for the demolition and so forth. So is, am I, am I clear on that with, uh, the board? So what was discussed in a finance tonight was the implications of this and, uh, what, whether it fits in the affordability that we had projected with our borrowing plan or capital improvement plan back in March of twenty twenty. Conclusion that I believe we all heard was that it does match, uh, what we, you know, either scenario actually would fit. And and I don't know if there was some misunderstanding, but I said the estimate that we made on the impact to a hundred fifty thousand dollar home of eighty-six cents per thousand of assessed value was really, was the same as what was presented tonight in these two, in these two different scenarios. And the, um, the Finance Committee, of course, made their recommendation fifteen million dollar level, which would actually have been a smaller project, but, um, that's still, I guess, subject to your discussion tonight. Um, if I misstated anything, Jessica, okay? So, I'm not sure there's more to discuss tonight. I know this is a very important topic and I don't want to leave anything to, to anybody's imagination. If there's a question, certainly we want to be able to address those from the board tonight. John Wallenkamp is here tonight to talk about the, the two items that, uh, well, I guess, a couple of items. One is, I think, relative to some questions we've had about the building construction and it's, um, I guess, relative economy as compared to other construction methods. That is the precast construction walls that are proposed on this building uh, relative to other possible construction methods like, uh, concrete masonry or pre-engineered metal buildings. Um, I furnished some information to you over the weekend that included an analysis or kind of a comparison of the analysis done for a project in Peewaqui. But John has now updated one that would be relevant to our projects. We can cover that. Uh, there were some materials distributed here just before the meeting that, that will be related to this discussion. And then he's also gonna have the, uh, some discussion about the, uh, comparison of the, the VAV, the variable error volume, or I guess I would say the traditional forced air type of, uh, HVAC system versus the alternate system, the VRF or variable refrigerant flow that, uh, has been recommended by the committee. So, I guess unless there's other questions for me right now, I'll turn it over to John.
John, what are you gonna be talking about?
Yeah, John, what I'd like to do is introduce some team members that are online.
Okay.
And they're gonna get into the, um, VRF system.
Okay.
And explain the payback system and there's a chart they're, they're gonna go over just to help the board understand what that system is and what the potential payback is
Okay.
compared to the VAV system and based on the numbers that came in, um, of the project budget. The numbers that they're gonna talk about tonight are based on what was recommended by the Building Board, the full buildout and adding the VRF system for the two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. So, the system they're gonna talk about is relating those numbers.
Okay, um, when you, when he's finished, we can then go back and ask questions. Okay.
Yeah, and then once they're done, I'd like to then, uh, as Keith mentioned, I'll go over the, um, the facade numbers that you have in front of you and explain the numbers in each category so you, you understand how those numbers were derived, uh, derived from, from each category and each system. We should get Charles and Max on. Or Sam? Got Sam at you? This is the wrong chart though.
Yep.
Okay. Sam, can you, uh, introduce yourself there?
Hey, John?
Yes.
I think Sam, Sam had to head out at seven. Uh, I think Dan is on the call though with Dyken.
Okay. Dan, you there?
So Dan.
Yeah, hi, this is Dan Bohm from La Crosse, so I'm, I'm on the call as well.
Dan, will you be able to walk through the, uh, the charts that you see here?
Yes.
You guys prepared?
So, so Sam actually had prepared an energy analysis to try to compare the two systems. The variable air volume, which is a typical rooftop system. Nothing wrong with it, it's just a, a very basic forced air system. And then the variable refrigerant volume is the, the more state-of-the-art and very energy-efficient system. We modeled it based on climate data and you're gonna see in the, the, the picture that's showing up there shows the climate city is Toronto. It's not based on Toronto's weather data, it's just, that is the temperate zone that the Wausau area falls into, or the Western area falls into. Um, the office type is, or the type of construction is office, square feet was twenty-one thousand. Labor type is just the, whether it was a union, non-union job, we, we did it as open shop, so it's using traditional labor rates. Electric rate of eleven cents a KW and a gas rate of seventy-nine or almost eighty cents a therm. Both of those are good for this area. Obviously, electric rates and gas rates have fluctuated somewhat. Uh, we've plugged in inflation rate of one and a half percent. Finance people can decide whether that's accurate or not going forward. Certainly, historically, it's been accurate and we, we don't know where it's, where it's headed from here. Um, net present value discounted is another one that's for pretty customary. The bottom line for what you people are looking at is the payback is the difference between the energy savings primarily and the additional first cost expenditure. The payback is approximately eight years that the energy efficiency and maintenance's differences will pay back from the VRV system versus the traditional rooftop system. That's, that's probably the most important thing for the board.
It's on the basis of the cost of the system for the full building, correct?
Yeah. If you could slide to the bottom left.
Yeah, a little, little, little bit more. Can we slide left a little bit? There, there's a, a bar graph chart a little bit farther over. There you go, right there. So the first cost difference, um, is, is the, the, the blue number, the two hundred thousand versus the four hundred thousand. The, the gray is the projected energy savings over twenty years. Or the energy costs over twenty years, the difference would be the savings. The, the green is the maintenance costs. We're saying that they're very, very, very similar. The, the yellow or the, the orange color, that's reflecting the replacement costs. And where, where that becomes significantly different is the rooftop systems have an average age of fifteen years. So we're saying it, in a twenty-year to twenty-five-year life cycle analysis, you will have to have replaced the rooftop system in that time. And the, the lifetime, or the life expectancy of the VRV system is in twenty to twenty-five years. So it's a significantly longer life system. So, between energy and the replacement costs, that's, that's what's creating the, the, the payback analysis for you.
Michael, if you can slide this to the left. That's another way you can see the different, the first time cost on that. Your, your left there is the fluid, the VRF, and then that's the two hundred thousand dollar delta that we saw there in the bidding. As Keith started saying, I said earlier, this is for the full building. The alternate bid for the twenty-foot reduction was actually a savings. So your payback, obviously, would be greater.
Would be less.
Yep.
I have a question. This is Laura. I have a question. During the discussions of the Building Committee, there was some questions about the, uh, capability of the V, VRV surviving in the harsh Wisconsin winters. I see it's calculated for the, uh, variable refrigerant, correct?
They're, they're calling it VRV.
They're calling it.
So it's the same thing, yeah, it's, it's, and maybe they could explain that, but I caught.
At any rate, um, what is the experience with using these particular units? Granted, the weather cycle says for Toronto and we have similar weather, weather, I assume.
Charles, maybe you could hit on that because we added additional equipment for the harsh winters to supplement the heat. Charles, if you could hit on that?
Okay. Yeah, so it, it, I guess, we have in the VRF solution, uh, the condensing units are located inside. So, that's where we're seeing the big difference between the VAV and, uh, the VRF or VRV solution because the VAV rooftop units are located outside, so that's what Ashray predicts is about a fifteen-year, uh, you know, life cycle for that roof-mounted equipment versus the condensing units for the VRV solution, which are located on the mezzanine. Those are just not gonna have to endure the, you know, harsh winter conditions. Uh, so you're getting a longer life out of that equipment. Uh, and in the summer, when you're cooling, you're gonna have waste heat rejected into the mezzanine. And in the winter, you're gonna have waste, uh, cool air rejected into the mezzanine. So we added an additional, uh, unit heater and exhaust fan to either, you know, exhaust that excess heat in the summer, which we don't want into the mezzanine, or, uh, use that unit heater in the winter to heat up that excess, uh, cool air.
Thank you, that answers my question. Yeah. Um, one other chart I wanted to point out here because it was conflicting information that, um, when Focus on Energy ran the program and the modeling for the building of the two systems, that center consumption was said to be zero to zero, was, was the delta equal each other. If you remembered, one of the Building Committee members strongly kind of disagreed with that. And I think what we're finding here is, that's probably true because as we ran this model, you'll see they are showing there is a direct difference in utility cost between the two systems, which help, you know, favor the VRF system. We tend to, these guys are modeling these every day for just this type of system. So I tend to lean towards this documentation being the more truthful documentation. And as you mentioned, one of the building, as I mentioned, one of the Building Committee members even kind of reiterated that multiple times.
I, I see in the document here, it's, it, the, VRV, uh, emits sixty-seven percent lower CO2. It's kind of a bonus.
Yeah.
And, and that is based on the energy consumption? So we're, we're not actually, neither system is really generating CO2, it's the, the greenhouse emissions saved on the electrical side from the, from the power plants.
From generating the electricity and or burning the natural gas.
Cor- correct, correct.
So one question, I think that
So one question, I think that came up as we were talking about this, uh, with John. Are there any issues with this type of system being able to? Meet all the heating needs in the, uh, the colder weather periods that we might experience?
So, uh, this is Charles, uh. We have a boiler system, uh, with baseboard heat, uh, for the winter here. We weren't comfortable just running, uh, you know, only the, the V R F system for heating, uh, in this climate. So it has supplemental, uh, baseboard heat, uh, which, you know, we feel pretty confident that, that's going to serve all the heating needs.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's not calculated into the consumption use on these comparisons, correct, Charles?
Yes. Unless, unless, uh, Sam got that in there, Dan, I, I don't believe.
No, no, we did not include supplemental.
What, what would that cost be approximately?
The boilers are usually pretty efficient, um, I don't know, Charles, if you got an estimated cost per year of running the boilers, but.
Not running it, uh, it's not even in the system. So you actually have to put the boilers in.
No, no, they're in it, they're in the design already.
In which design, which one?
Both.
Oh, they are.
Oh, no, no, the, the current bids include all of this, everything we're stating here tonight are in the current documents.
Friday when we talked, Keith, you said that we're going to have to put another system in and Ashley was already in.
I didn't realize that that was already.
Oh, no, no, this is, I'm sorry.
No, it's my.
Okay, so it's nothing additional, other than the cost of maybe running it, but that's it.
Correct, and boilers are very efficient. The, the one thing I do want to point out is the, all the research we're doing on this system. They're pretty, they're heavily sophisticated, so they, they rely on the installer. And all these manufacturers that produce these systems train and only certain individuals can install these systems. The number one thing we're hearing, they have to be installed correctly. Okay, maintenance does happen with these systems, I do want the village to know. It also requires a skilled individual to maintain them. So obviously you're going to have less maintained, there's less to me, but that's factored in these numbers. But I, you know, it's not just the same heating guy down the road that you can just, and anybody can work on the systems. They are trained sys, individuals to work specifically on these systems.
Mister President, I just had a question going off what, um, uh, what, what was just mentioned there here. So I guess, um, I, I, you know, me being an individual, very ignorant of, of H VAC systems, et cetera. You know, maintaining, you mentioned that there needs to be a specialized, uh, specialist who's going to be maintaining that, uh, unit there. I guess in the local area here, do we have somebody, do we have experts that are able to do that? I know that we mentioned quite a bit that our public works, where our staff here has done a lot of maintenance to this building here. Are we looking to get that individual, do we have that capability to train that individual at all? Or is, or is there any experts in the area here? I'm, because, uh, obviously I don't want us to get an H VAC mission. Unit that nobody here knows how to fix, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yes, so, so the system, um, there will be certain things that in-house can do. But then there's traditional maintenance that regardless you'd be calling a technician. The low bidder that is for this project, who is a certified installer of the system, I believe is from.
Comfort, Comfort Systems from Marshfield is certified. You also, you also have another very qualified person in, in the Village of Weston. A contractor that is, is very qualified in this system.
But not certified.
Not certified by us, but we could easily, he's certified in one of our competitors that, uh, very, very cross. Cross pollinated there, it would be very easy to have him certified in our stuff.
Yeah, I think what, what you see is this is a system that. Each firm kind of takes one system and specializes in that system and sells that one system, but can be cross-trained as he's saying. As he said to, to work on multiple systems.
Okay.
Does that help those two different systems? Or, you know, it's a lot of information, but I think. Based on what we're seeing, it's, it's a system as, as our engineers have talked, they've used a lot in the, the south. In the south more than they have in the north, but as we're running these numbers and looking at, it's a system we, we could stand behind and recommend.
I think this, this clarifies a lot of issues for me as far as the concern about, is this adaptable to the cold, a cold climate that we have? And, um. And it doesn't, the units aren't out on the roof. And I think one of the other values I saw that, uh, clusters, each cluster has their own air source. So we're not sharing air sources between office clusters.
Great point, um, it was pointed out during the building committee, so these, um. The V R system can contain individual cassettes for each individual office, we didn't do it that way, we put a cassette, so maybe for two to three offices. But that cassette only brings in air to itself. Where all the other, the V A V system is sharing air from all the spaces. So with today's current movement, that's a, a, a great point to, to, it's. It's cleaner air and lesser, you know, under, trying to cover twenty square feet for the same air mix.
The only thing that would be better is if it, I don't know, perhaps you can tell me, this isn't, does the system have HEPA filters?
Uh, Charles, if you can talk on the filter system.
So for, yeah, it won't have HEPA filters. I think, uh, some of the ducted units, uh, indoor units will be able to get, uh, MERV. Definitely MERV eight and with some of them, we might, uh, depending on the fan size, be able to go up from there. Uh, in the other standard indoor, uh, cassettes, I think we're kind of stuck with, with some MERV eight. So from a filtration standpoint, it's not as good, uh, as a V A V. V A V, you could easily throw MERV thirteen in, uh, into the rooftop, but like John was saying, you're not sharing as much air. Uh, with the V A, uh, excuse me, with the V R F that you are with the V A V. So there's kind of a trade-off there.
Currently, what does Ashray code require for filtration? What level?
I think Ashray only requires MERV eight at this point, but we think moving forward, they're gonna. Go to something higher, we're not exactly sure, we're speculating there, but, uh, I, I think. It's, it's wise to get a higher MERV rating if you can, it, it depends on what kind of fans we've gotten those indoor units.
Great, thanks.
Somebody explain MERV.
Charles.
Uh, MERV is just kind of a, a rating for, uh, the level of filtration, the higher MERV rating. The more, uh, I guess fine particles get picked out, uh, so the more you're, you're filtering. Uh, I think kind of the highest level that you can get is, is HEPA and that's what you see in hospitals and stuff like that. Uh, but putting in a thicker, stronger filter just means you have to pull the air harder and in something like. Yeah, exactly, so if you have a, a, uh, kind of smaller indoor unit that's just serving three offices, the fan in there. Isn't strong enough to pull air across a really, really thick filter, so we're, we're limited to a MERV eight versus, you know, something like HEPA. Which is just difficult to pull air across.
Thank you.
Not that we're trying, we, we wouldn't want to try to confuse the issue for, for the village, but there's, there's also other emerging technologies that are. Out there right now that are, whether it's ionization technologies or different things to increase the filtering effectiveness. And we, we're seeing more and more of that becoming customary as well.
Uh, I've got a question on the, uh, anticipated lifespan of twenty years. Is that a fairly, uh, conservative number or is that more or less, uh, spot on? Could it last twenty-five to thirty without, uh, too much additional?
We're talking V A V.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my, my research on that is. If you move that one, you got to move the V A V too.
Okay.
So to be fair to the systems, I think fifteen and a twenty, now the V A V might go seventeen, eighteen, but then. V R F might go twenty-four, twenty-five, so I think to do the equal comparison, that's why we ran them at what the Ashray kind of uses the numbers.
Okay.
Being that your outdoor unit for the V R F system, the refrigerant volume system is indoors, it, it increases that life considerably. If it was to be put outside in a, the cold environment along with the, like the rooftop. I would say that that number is probably closer to fifteen than it would be to twenty-five. But being indoors, it helps out, helps it out a lot.
So your recommendation is the.
I was backing and getting information based on the building committee's recommendation and based on what we're finding with the paybacks, it's, it's to go to the V R F.
I mean, Friday, I, I kind of felt you were telling me that we're, that he's going to come back with V A V. Well, I didn't, we didn't have this information. And now we're at F.
This is. Yeah, it's pretty, it's been pretty fluid and educational for, on my end. And this chart is, is newest probably two hours ago.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
Good information, I appreciate the work that you did.
Okay. Anybody?
Well, I guess I just, I, I look at the lifespan more than anything else. Of the, whatever it's called.
The H VAC, okay.
Yeah.
V R.
Well, the two of them compared in eight years, I mean.
Yeah, eight-year ROI.
That's, you know, that's a lot of money and then otherwise you got to replace the whole unit again. And I know the problems we've had with the units that we've got up here. But, uh, that I think is kind of what surprised.
I, that's probably done, I mean, we're probably done on the H VAC. Um, I want to address some issues on, uh, the twenty percent reduction. So I felt we were going to actually talk about it tonight and I feel like it, like, I feel like I'm going to be the only one that's going to actually bring this up. And we're not even going to take a stab at trying to save a little bit of money. And when I look at this, and, and this is just my opinion, I'm one person up here. But let's just, let's just go down this chart, does everybody have the same chart I have? Yeah, this one right here. Everybody have that five-page memo that you sent out? Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yep, there's a five-page memo that got sent out this weekend. It was appended to the packet as well, yesterday. And so let's just go to the garage portion first. So if we go to the garage portion, nothing's going to change there. I mean, it's going from thirty thousand, three ninety-five with all the buildings we have to eighty-six thousand, seven oh seven. Approximately a little less than three times, you know, what it is now. We need it, it's, I mean, when we talk to people, it's, you know, we need a, a different garage, what, does nobody have this? Where is it? No, this, what's the cover sheet? Uh, the cover sheet is. Proposed Weston Municipal Facility. Given a hard copy, this is all such an email. It's the second, it's the second page of five pages.
Found it, thank you.
All right, just go down to the bottom one first, I'm, I'm going to just kind of dump that. Who's, who's controlling the screen? You're looking at, you want the chart of the building sizes, the room sizes, there you go, you want, you want the second page of that. Perfect, right there, just go to the bottom.
There you go.
There we go, so if we're looking at the bottom number, you know, it's, it's less than three times, you know, the thirty thou, thirty thousand, three ninety-five. Now, if you go into the quadrants, um, you know, locker room is being adjusted thirty-two times its current rate, you know, and I know we have nothing. I know nobody's really using it, I'm sure you haven't taken a shower in twenty years, uh, but it's thirty-two times what we have now. Um, the garage, which does need to increase, is two-point-three times more than what we have now. The shop is two-point-five times more than we have now, which we need. And the shop storage is six times what we have now, so shop storage is going six times more. And I, I guess I feel inventory is, is, um, I would think it's pretty, I mean, car dealerships. You know, NAP is running twenty times a day because you don't want to have that inventory and that cost of goods.
Right.
You want it just in time, but that's six times, so I, I'm not even going to talk about the garage. The garage is done, nothing can happen there, there is only two portions, we did a small and a large version. Or, or I mean, I should say the, the full building and then the twenty percent less. So now if we do, if we do the twenty percent less, you know, we're looking at the, just the hallways and lobby. You know, is, uh, two-point-nine-eight times more on the big one and three-point-ten times more on the smaller office. I, I don't know why, but there must be a couple extra hallways, you can't look at the stairs, you can't look at the elevator. And then when you look at the office storage, it's three times, three-point-zero-nine times more on the small building. And three-point-two-eight times on the office store. And my understanding is in seven years, we're going to be able to go digital and we won't have to keep all this paper. Um, I just wonder if we're pushing the storage mechanical, apparently we have none of our going to five-ten. A janitor is the only thing that's going backwards, we currently have two-hundred-and-twelve square feet. And the small version is one forty-three and the large version is one five-five. Uh, the copy room, uh, the small version is one, one-point-three-five times more than what we have now. And, uh, the big one, the large building is two times. The break and training areas is four times more than what we have now on either one. It's, it's a couple points after that. Conference rooms on the small version is one-point-five-eight times more than we have now and two-point-oh-two times. The boardroom is one-point-four-seven on both, so it's going up from this size about half again. On the offices, and you got to look at future offices because we're talking about where are we going to expand. But future offices need to go in with offices, but if you don't, um, the, just the current offices is about one and a half times. What we have now, but if you put in the future offices, then it's two-point-six-two times more offices. On the large building at one-point-eight-three, and on the restrooms, absolutely, I, these are the restrooms we have other than the shop, right? I mean, we definitely need more restrooms, I mean, and I'm, I would think the restrooms and the shower probably help too, but anyway. Um, so anyway, one and a half times more, that actually doesn't seem like enough. But if you look at, right now, our offices are eight-seven-eight-eight, eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight square feet. And the small one is nineteen-seven-four-three, which is two-point-two-four times more than what we have now. So that's, that's putting bodies in those offices, that's, that's a lot of bodies, uh, that's, you know, at least two times. And then if you look at the larger building, it's two-point-six-three times more, and that's apparently what everybody's talking about tonight. We're talking about the larger building and we're not even going to try to save a little bit. And, uh, I walked in here tonight, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I was done, I mean, the election kind of told it, I was done, it's going to happen. Uh, you know, it's over and, you know, so be it, we just got to move on, we need it, we got to have something. But I got to tell you after this, and, and I, I, nobody, staff or architect said a word. About the smaller version, not one word, and I was led to believe Friday and Thursday that we would be talking about that. Nobody brought up, now I was told at the bids and on Friday. That the architect and staff thought that we would actually recommend the twenty percent off. And now we're at the full one, nobody has said, nobody from staff has offered that, you know what, really, we really don't need this, this big administration area. You know, really, we should save, e- even though it's, it's a reduction, if you have to rebuy it, I don't think we're ever going to have to rebuy it, ever. At seventy-seven, so it's kind of a misleading thing to say that if we had to get it back, we, we, it would cost, you know, we're only going to get seventy-seven. Percent, uh, dollars and we'd probably cost us two hundred or three hundred dollars more. I don't know, I'm, I'm just, we're not even trying to do anything to reduce this. We're just, and you know what, after looking at the finances, maybe we shouldn't even think about it, it's not that big of a change. You know, for what we got to pay back, John, you got your hand up?
Yeah, um. My, my recommendation originally to the building committee, if you remember, was the smaller office.
Yep.
But tonight, I didn't come with a recommendation either way, I came with the information that was requested from the building committee, so I apologize. But to me, I, I'm just giving you the facts of kind of looking at, so when I just tell you what the office square footage is for the twenty feet. It'll be in seventy-six, I just want to help educate too, so we make the right decision.
I, I find absolutely no, I don't even want to say the word fault, you are absolutely doing your job. But you're, and you do it very, very well. I am disappointed, um, that honestly, I think we could add twenty percent to this building and I don't think staff would say a word. I think they'd say fine. I don't know where the limit is, I mean, if we made it two-hundred thousand square feet, that's okay, yeah, let's do that, we could use it, go ahead, Keith. So the building committee made a recommendation to this board. Yep. Discuss that recommendation. If your question is, can we live with a building that is smaller, I say absolutely yes, we can. So, um. I guess I'm fine with that smaller building, it's just, and I, we have to try to somehow. Understand what some of the future needs might be, uh, or get, make some projection on that is. It's outlined, I guess, not only here, but it was, it's, it's somewhat, it's mentioned in other documents, but. You know, we're supposed to get fifty percent growth in Maryland, California in the next, the next, uh, twenty years. Uh, what does that translate to in terms of staff, I guess we were trying to make some estimate of that. Um, we have, I think it was mentioned, we, we have some unknowns as far as how with building inspection requirements may go over time. Um, we have opportunities to make, uh, or to bring in interns in the summer and we have very. Really no place to put them, if you go into our, into our vault or restore some of the documents that need.
If you go into our, into our vault or restore some of the documents that need to be stored and hard copy, there's, there's some needs for some more space there. I, you know, we went through a process with the architect to try to understand the sizes and staffing needs. I think the process that was used is something that will be used anywhere. And, um, I guess, uh, we even, I guess, even based on what the recommendation was from the original facilities evaluation, um, the size of the office has been cut down on the smaller to just under 20,000. I think the recommendation coming out of that initial review is for a 26,000 square foot office. So has there been a reduction? Yes, there's been a reduction in the projections from the initial um, facilities evaluation where there was some reference to 40 new employees. So that number has been pared down.
We, we just have, we have tons of expansion in the offices. We, we have it built in. I mean, we have it built into, uh, on the small one, 2.24 and 2.63. In fact, we, we're not even building out everything above the boardroom. Now let's go to the garage and rightfully so. I think the garage is the most needed thing we have right here. That's the biggest issue, safety, OSHA, everything. Uh, and then lost production is probably unbelievable. But when, when you look at the offices, we have the growth in it and it's actually sitting there. It'll be, it'll be empty for a while. The garage has a piece of equipment in every single space. So where, where is the growth there unless we take a wall down and then, and then go north? But the garage, I mean, you know, it's sitting at three times the size it is now. Um, and it's going to be gorgeous. I mean, I, I've gone through these buildings that Kenny architects have done it. They're, they're phenomenal. They're very, very nice, very modern, uh, very usable. But, um, it just, it just seems to be a little kittywampus there on the offices. So I, I, I wonder sometimes if we would have seen originally from the architect, a smaller, you know, we would have been just as happy. But now we have our sights set on this building and we can't let go.
But that's been, that's, that's been something that they're doing since last fall.
It was such an argument to get, just get the fuel island out. And we don't even take care of our fuel. Like, we don't even manage our fuel like we should. You know, uh, and I, I brought up the, the wash base. We don't even talk about the chemicals and all the equipment and all the upkeep and the replacing of all the parts. You know, when you look at those things, then, then the showers got downgraded big time, but the space is still there. And, um, I mean, honestly, the first argument I heard when I brought up the showers at the building committee, I, the first argument I heard is sometimes we play basketball on our lunch hour and breaks. Um, sometimes we run on our lunch hour and it'd be nice to take a shower. Actually, what I did here, which I thought the showers were for, was for the road crew. I thought the road crew deserved them. I don't think the office needs them at all. I don't have them. Everybody I called in this area doesn't have showers. You know, you, you got a long way to go home before you got to go to your kids' field, which is what John brought up. Not my problem. Go home and take a shower, you know, like everybody else does. So.
We didn't discuss that.
We did take them down. And I'm glad that they're pointing the road crew too. That's my two cents. I, I'm disappointed that we're not going to even attempt the smaller version. I am. I don't know which way I'm going to go. Barb?
I guess my question, um, you know, there isn't, like you said, when you look at it, the difference is really very small between them. But with the smaller version, where is the expansion in the office? Where is that going to go?
Who says we need it?
Well, what, in seven years, they're talking remaining, remaining. Nobody can look in the future and know exactly what's going to go on.
What are those seven years? What?
Well, somebody said in seven years or eight years, we might have to use some of the future office space.
Oh, yeah, fine. But, but it's not up there.
My question is, where is this future office space? Is it in the mezzanine? Where is it?
It's above the boardroom. We're not going to finish it out. Correct.
Which, which option?
It says right here, future offices, 3,800 square feet and 1,400 respectfully.
Above the.
Where is it? Above the boardroom, I thought.
Yeah, if, if you're talking the basement building.
Hmm, which is the big building.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not going to build it out. So it's going to be sitting there dormant until we need it.
Okay, I'm talking the small version. Where is the, the expansion? Where is it?
Still above the boardroom. It's 1,427 feet.
Okay, so it's not over the mezzanine?
There's a little bit.
We just stand the mezzanine.
Mark?
Yep.
Excuse me. The alternate bid for the 20 small, it's a different floor plan.
Hmm.
Uh, and Michael, once it's up, can you go to the second level of the smaller footprint?
Yeah.
Remember that the, the, the boardroom got populated with space. This is the smaller footprint. The only space that's future then is that the smaller upper left corner. So in both scenarios, it's not over the boardroom.
Oh, okay.
The larger scheme is over the boardroom.
It's box side for the building.
Yeah. So then when we take the 20 feet out, we couldn't fit everybody in that left side anymore. So we populated it as you're seeing here. And the upper left corner is now the future space.
And now this big as was.
Oh, it, yeah, half of, yeah, correct. What somebody might be remembering on the mezzanine is what I said. You would never cost effectively build another office wing on this. You would expand onto that mezzanine wing and kick that space out and put it somewhere else more. That's what was discussed.
If we need it.
Well, whether you built a smaller outbuilding or something, yeah, you would have to find a spot to put it. Yes, Barb. That's my point.
So you would have to move something out of that mezzanine and build maybe another small building?
That's, but that, that's already though, using the 1,427 feet that we're not going to use right away. That's future. Correct?
That's the mezzanine.
You would have to pull that corner space first, Mark. Correct.
Right there. There's a corner space right there.
But what is that? What is that small?
Is it mezzanine or is it just not built out office space?
That upper left space in the smaller is just what we call white box.
Yep.
It's just white walls, no ceiling.
Not the mezzanine.
Minimum light.
Yep.
Not the mezzanine.
Thank you.
So after that's filled, Barb, then the mezzanine would be available. And that's way down the road, if needed, way down the road.
But if, if, if you look at that space, it's probably eight offices or 16 cubicles. You know what I mean? It's, it's not, I don't, I don't want to make it sound like it's, it's a monster. It's, it's not that large of a space. Just making sure we, I don't want to mislead anybody on the space. If you take that area and look at the offices to the, to the right, that's what you're covering.
How many employees do we have here right now?
Yeah. Thirty-five total.
Thirty-five or 37, including the road crew. So let's take the road crew out.
So that's, um.
Twenty-seven.
So 27. Um, everyone else other than the road crew would have some area in this administration area. Correct? Yes? And we're.
On top of, there's, there's a few conference rooms too that are in there.
So, yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's conference rooms. Uh, conference went up, uh, two, two times on the big one and 1.58. Uh, the storage is the big one. I mean, when you look at storage, it went up 3% on both. And if in seven or eight years, we don't have to keep paper anymore, storage rooms could become offices. So I, I, I just, I think we should at least attempt, you know, I, I get that the money and the pain back is, it almost seemed miniscule to me. It really did. It, it actually, I, I had a, I had a, I'm not kidding. I had to just get worked up almost here to even bring this up, but I felt I had to.
The, the other thing that, this is pretty traditional, what you see with offices, when you've got a building, because you lack such, you, you don't need 88 pretty much anywhere in this building. It's, it's not a hidden, so just when you start factoring those into office space, it, it blow, it, unfortunately, it's lopsided from the garage space is what I want to say.
But, you know, we've got stairs, we've got elevators, we've got different things. So we're, we're definitely compliant, even with all the, the non-built out areas. But I'm, I'm telling you, the office, you know, adding on to offices or finding where to put more offices is nothing to this equation. Putting a body in there and, and keeping that body on staff for a long time. You know, sometimes, yes, we're going to have growth and I think, what did I see? Uh, 23,000 or 22,000 versus what? 17,000 we have now for growth? How much of that can we handle with what we have now? You know, do we, do we have to match it with everything? I mean, you know, we built a hospital and a whole complex over there. We, you know, promised the police department three officers. We never did it. Because they're handling it with what they have now. Are they shorthanded? Yes, they're shorthanded. And or three short. But, I mean, you know, we can't handle more productivity and then as computers get better, we're, they're getting faster that way. We do less manual stuff. Barb?
Yeah, well, I guess the other concern I have, and I, I think I know the answer to it. We are going to be able to, with the smaller building, we are going to be able to hold our elections in full.
Yep. The training room is still back there behind the office on, on.
Yeah, well, there's the boardroom and then I think.
Right. That's on the lower level.
That's on the lower level. Yeah.
Yep. With, with, the clerk's office is said, they hope that never comes back here because it works out so well at Dale's Weston Lane.
Well, I mean, my other thought was, I don't know what Dale's Weston Lanes is and you can't count on
Yep.
a, a private or its place, but, um, it seems to, it probably.
The parking's unbelievable. The bathrooms are everywhere.
You know.
It's probably worth it. Yep. You have all your, um, you know, voting people, all the volunteers there and stuff or not volunteers.
Mr. President, I'm.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. Uh, I guess, uh, just for the sake of moving the discussion forward here, I saw, are you recommending, um, some changes to the smaller offices? Is that what you're recommending?
I, I just think we should consider the, the, the smaller version. Uh, with the 20%, we're, we're, we're talking about 3,374 square feet. Not one floor. That's both. Or is that two times?
I, I just want to make sure, Mark. You, you, you're saying 20%, it's 20 feet off the slice.
Yep. Okay.
I, I'm just making sure because other things have been written and it's the wrong, I, 20 feet, 20 feet.
So it's 20 feet.
Not 20%.
So it's, it's even less than, than 20.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're, we're, we're.
Yep. I, what, what I look at here is, is that.
Yeah, 20 feet.
Okay, 20 feet.
Honestly, I mean, um, I don't have a, uh, as strong opinion on full build versus smaller. So if, uh, if we can have more, um, if we can have more, uh, unity with a smaller office for giving up 3,400, uh, square feet, I'm, I'm fine with the smaller one.
I, I want to make sure though, that first of all, we came in tonight with the votes. The votes are here. Regardless of what I do, regardless of what some other ones do too, but the votes are here. Okay, with, with, and, and it's the, the, the board that's going to last only tonight. With the new board, we would even have more votes. So, I mean, everyone probably knows that. So I, I don't want, um, yes, I want unity, but I also, I'm just saying my, my, uh, my piece, I am a loud talker. I am, uh, I hope I don't sound like I'm a bully, that I'm forcing anything here. I am fine if I'm in the minority. But I, I felt like I had to say something. I, I just, uh, I, this new build is desperately for the road crew, for the public works, unbelievably. And yes, the office, uh, I mean, my gosh, we could have done something 30 years, 20 years ago at least. Um, I just think, are we doing too much? And, um, it's not a huge savings. Jessica?
I think I just want to reiterate the, what Bob Bender, why he voted the way it was, he voted. And it was to show the community that the village board is going to make some concessions. And, yeah, it doesn't affect the taxes that much, but it just goes to show that the committee, we're going to suck it up a little bit. We're going to save some money and still move forward. So I mean, that's where the finance committee was. I know we were all there, but I just wanted to bring that back up.
Good, good point. There's, there's nothing else we can do. We're, we're locked into these two beds. The garage ain't moving. And, and it's a small, and in fact, if we would not have bid the small version, we wouldn't even be talking about this right now. Because we, otherwise, we'd have to stop this process, which would never happen. And then we'd go back two or three or four years again to start this all over, which would be horrible. And, and I'll, I'll defend that with anyone that calls me, anyone that stops me in the street. Um, you, you need to understand what, what's happening here and how we have to move forward. Um, but, you know, as, as much as I couldn't understand why we did bid the two, I'm happy we did. So we have this opportunity. And simple.
He has his hands first. So I, I just want to understand the concern here is that, um, you're, you're, you're a little, uh, yeah, I mean, but President Mulley, you're a little, um, I guess, uh, disappointed with the fact that, um, when the, that this discussed, that there was no suggestions about us giving a smaller off, or entertaining the smaller options when we went out to bid. As a matter of fact, it was forced in the sense that you felt like you were forcing it to, uh, happen. Am I understanding that right?
I, I didn't, I didn't expect that from any of the board members. I, I am disappointed that staff did not come forward and say, you know what? We could, Jessica did say something during the, during the building. She's the only one that did. Nobody else has. We've had some discussions last week with some and I, I thought that that was going to happen tonight and it didn't happen.
But just, oh, I want to go follow up quickly. So, um, uh, so, and I just want to understand that the motion that was brought up by the finance was for, in favor of the smaller office.
Yes, correct.
Just wanted to clarify.
It was for the financing.
Of, of the 15 versus 15.5.
Correct. Which would, well, that's, I think we need a little clarification on what we're, what action we are taking. Or is it in conformity with the finance committee and, and we've already said 15 at, at, so it's repetitive. We either would reduce it or increase it or leave it the same.
Well, I actually have a point here is I think with Bob's, uh, motion, I think we could still, with 15 million, we could still build the big building.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah.
So Bob didn't actually say, uh, he just wants the, the financing to be 15 versus 15.5. We still, the both options are there. I, I don't want to misunderstand that at all. Go ahead.
Yeah, because as you see up there, the, the bigger building's the 14 one.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
I, um, I certainly have beat this to death. I mean, in the building committee, uh, there wasn't a week that didn't go by that I brought stuff up that I just, I thought we should at least talk about and discuss, and I think we did. Uh, there was some concessions and then other ones, uh, we stayed. But, um, I, I can't imagine that we're not ready to vote on this. John?
I, I just want to make sure. I heard other numbers of what this costs each year. Historically, we use 3.9 inflation factor. The last few years, it's been trending at about 5%.
You mean to, to not build now?
Yeah, so.
We have to.
No, no, I just want to make sure people
Yeah, well, no.
that, that was thrown out. There's a question to me. I just want to make sure I repeat.
I, I, we absolutely have to build now.
Yeah, so I've got, uh, I've got two things real quick. Um, number, number one, Mark, since you laid the cards on the table and, uh, and it's believed that this project has the votes. I wanted to address something that one of our citizens brought up and just to get a little bit of an answer. Uh, what was the con, uh, did the contract change for the 12 million, 86 or 87,000 square foot thing?
Can I, can I just go first and then you can correct me?
Oh, I, yeah.
Um, since that was public comment.
Okay.
And you can't discuss it. And can we now? We can talk about that now. That, well, that was not a, um, I, I believe Jim made the statement that 12 million was a hard line or a set stone. It's not. And I, I read that contract. I mean, I was on the phone with Steve and others and I was all over that thing. Keith pointed out to talk, to look at 6.1 and two and three and four. And that is, I believe that that contract, correct me if I'm wrong, was designed to set your fee. You know, to start that fee.
Okay.
So actually, if we, if we would have had it at 15 and 106,000, he would have had a higher, a higher fee. So he accepted that fee off of those numbers and those were not a contract for the build. And if you read through the 21, the 22 pages of this thing, it, it clearly says that because I was really shocked when I first saw this and I thought, oh my gosh, are we all left the center? And it clearly does not, it says, uh, the owner's budget for the cost of work is defined in section one, but it's all to, to get him his.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 5, $522,000.
Yeah. And, and to explain that a little further is, we remember if you, all the cost, we give you building cost and then all these other components. So, so even to compare the 12 to the 15 isn't correct because if you look at the base bid, it was, it's not even 15. So I guess that's the other thing. It just, but as Mark said, it, that's a sliding piece, you know?
I guess I, I disagree. I, I think that the contract is this for this dollar amount. The charge was to build this building for the 12 million based on the, the budget of 12 million. That's how I'm viewing it. So if that's different than what, if that's different than what was approved at the board at that time, then that should be looked at. But I, I, I look at this here saying this is the square footage at a certain dollar amount. And yet now we're up to what? 109,000 square feet instead of the 87,000? I mean, yeah, I'm not, you don't have to be a genius to think that it's going to cost more. I'm just saying that if the charge was to build it for 12 million at this size, that's what we should have done. Maybe, and maybe it is downsizing. And maybe it is downsizing the office to a, you know, you've got grade A, you know, office space, and maybe you had to downsize that. Well, then we wouldn't be having the discussion with what Mark pointed out tonight.
And then 106, I believe, Keith substantiated that that is second floor and mezzanine, usable mezzanine, not just air. So it really is 90, I think the footprint is 96,000, no, excuse me, it's, what is the actual footprint of?
Yeah, and in those cost sheets, I always indicated building footprint.
Okay.
And that's really the comparison.
Right. Okay.
I just want to ask Administrator Donner, did our attorney review the contract?
Yes. Did he see? The report was signed, yes.
The question I was asking is, did he state whether we have to abide by, you know, that limit that was in the contract? Or was it merely just to start that, to be able to come up with a salary for the architect, as President Maloney mentioned?
Contract is for establishing the architect's fee.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'll refer back to the cover page for the item on the February 3, 2020, Village Board Agenda. The estimated fiscal impact at that time was still between 13.1 and 15.1 million dollars. The recommendation was for this contract at the, you know, to establish the architect's fee. The, when we talked about this budget to put on the cover sheet, I remember, or on the first page of the agreement, I think I remember talking to John, what number should we use? Well, 12 million was in the original review from 2016. I guess, was in hindsight, it should have been modified at that time, but in the scheme of things, it did not establish that that was our project cost at that time. In fact, you know, I guess my backup to that was that it was, it was a different number right there. So there's provisions in the contract for increasing the fee. I pointed out that going through the building committee process, you would probably have had every right to ask for more money. I've asked, I asked him on several occasions if he was, if there was a need to entertain an amendment. And he's said no, he's fine, with the exception of the alternate HVAC system.
And then the second, the second thing that I had is, when we vote for this, when we vote for this project, I think that we should vote on the base building, and then the recommendations from the building committee individually. So that way, the board maximizes control, and we can have discussion on the individual items, rather than everything thrown together.
So that would include the equipment that they wanted, the heating system, and whether we go with the large or smaller.
I don't want to, you know, not be in agreement, but I think we should vote on either the one with the 20 feet off, or the original. I believe the VR, the F1 is apparently, has the vote, so the F should be in. Those two mechanical things for the shop, let me just read these here. Let's see here, the base crane should be in, the vehicle lift and mobile collar lift should be in, and then the deduct for the wash bay should be in. So I don't think we should, we should only look at the possible savings of 273,500 on the 20 feet. And then all that in there, or the original building, which has the 20 feet still in there, with all the rest in there, with the F, with the two things for the shop, and the deduction for the base. I think really, it really surrounds it with the two items.
I think that, yeah.
That should be enough.
The difference is between that 20 feet and the base building. Everything else you would want to include in a smaller building, that we have in the bigger building, except for 20 feet. At least, that's my understanding.
Yeah, when I said the base building, I just meant whichever one we decide to go with.
Right.
Mike, can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
I think if you put, Michael, if you put up the worksheet, the PDF that shows the project alternates, there we go. So the boxes that are blacked out are not part of each alternate there. You're talking about column E and column F, the two far right columns. Column E is the base building, but that's the building committee recommendation. The far right column is the one we're talking about right now.
Yeah, with the 20 feet off and everything building committee recommended?
No, yes, but E is, the second one to the end, is the one the building committee 10 to 0 recommended.
Okay.
And then F is with that 20-foot reduction.
Right.
But, I guess, oh, wait a minute.
The only exception, I'm sorry, would be that I don't show the VRF system out there, and, right, so.
So, you know what, we're not going to save 273, because we're getting the elevated F system, we'd save 50 grand.
That's right.
No, you're taking over, you're taking.
I'm done.
A minus 12,922.
I'll vote for either one, I'm done. I ask a God, I can't do this for two more years, and if I run again, I certainly ain't doing it for four. That's your answer. Yeah, Mark, Mr. McBain?
Can we see the bottom number, please?
I think this is a great discussion. Great discussion, this is democracy in action, right here. But I want you to think about this. Your building committee met eight or nine times, and each time, this was the discussion we had.
Many hours.
Many, many hours, nine times this discussion. And then we made a recommendation, and the recommendation was unanimous. Unanimous on our building committee. And you have that in front of you, that's what you have. After our many, many weeks of discussion, backwards and forwards, taking something out, putting something back in, we changed course several times. At one point, we endorsed the smaller building. Then we changed our mind, and after more information, we went with the bigger version. We put the wash bays in with automatic equipment, took it back out. And we had very dynamic discussions, just like you're having. And I don't envy you your job tonight, but you are the ultimate authority. We are just recommending these things to you. And you have to put your feelings on the line, your vote on the line, and just say, this is what I'm voting for, or not. So thank you for the opportunity to be involved in this project.
Thank you, Mark, thank you.
I really appreciate it, and so does all the committee. And so, good luck with.
You got it. Now, you said something, and I guess it, if we do alternate one, did that include the VAB system?
Here, I just put.
You said something about saving.
Yes, it does, Mark.
Okay, it does.
You have to take alternate four, if you take alternate one building.
What we need to say.
That goes with alternate four, if you want the VRF system.
Thank you.
Okay? So alternate one and alternate four go together. Alternate four is to go to the VRF system, which, we blanked it out, because it wasn't, that's actually a savings of $12,000, if you go with alternate one.
So E?
Base bid, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Base bid goes with alternate three.
Which is the building committee recommendation.
Which, I guess, if it's the building committee, which is an add of that 200.
For the VRF.
So base bid goes with alternate three, alternate one goes with alternate four.
Okay.
Hot together.
The second one from the end, E, is the recommendation from the open committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Went through that.
And I'm, I'm good.
Okay, I'm going to make.
I'm looking for, go ahead, Mark.
I'm going to make a mo, just because I was readily convinced to go with the smaller version. But when I'm looking at the dollar amounts, it doesn't make sense to.
Can I take five, or I'm taking four?
So I'm going to make a motion to go with alternate one with E, is that correct?
Just wait, we got something?
Okay, somebody's got something, then I'll follow up the motion.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what.
John, is there something coming up here?
Absolutes.
Well.
Your absolutes, what does it cost to build the furniture system? That's what it is. What is it?
But read that.
I did. And then what is it?
The contractor's debating, he's saying, which is wrong, the way it's written. And I shouldn't say it's wrong, it's, we'd have to work through. He's saying you have to take alternate three and four together regardless. That's why his number is 12,000, minus 12,000.
Is that negative 12, that we didn't believe?
So.
Okay. Okay.
I asked that, and I thought that's why, because if you read it, it's specifically saying, deduct or add to alternate number one. It doesn't say one and three. Now, I did mention it at the building committee, that it was odd that only two bidders had that $12,000.
Right, well, one got knocked out.
So one got knocked out, so Myron is here tonight saying that was the intent.
I don't understand.
It's $12,000.
It confuses it, I guess, what I would.
But the intent isn't the deal.
Right.
It's the opening the bids that day. You know, one of them didn't do add or deduct on two items, they're out.
Yeah, so, yes.
We could have took it to our advantage, and that would have been a $5,000, $500,000 hit on them.
That's right, so this is going to, if the board elects to do it the way I said,
Yes.
it's really going to be a legal interpretation of the bid form.
And it will get, it will go legal?
Yeah, well, because it's a 212, it's a $212,000 change, difference.
And can I just ask what the discussion was, that it should be more than that?
What I'm being told is that four and five need to be taken together. If you take alternate number one,
Yep.
and you want the VRF system, you need to take four and five.
So wait a minute, he's saying instead of $212,000 charge for the F, it'll be $200,000?
Yes, sir.
Well, hell, yeah.
It'll less.
Right, yeah, why wouldn't we want that?
It's a $200,000 add.
What, add?
Add.
It's a negative 12.
No, no, off of 212.
Yeah, yep.
I told you, you're still adding two.
Yeah, you're still adding 200,000. The net is $200,000 for the VRF system.
So instead of 212, it'll be 200,000?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what we were saying.
That's 12,000.
I know, but we're going to add 212.
Yeah, by going to, yeah.
Yes.
That don't make sense, if we go with E, it's 212.
Am I the only one taking this?
The intent of the bid form, okay, was if you went with alternate one, okay, the smaller office?
Yep.
If you read alternate number four, it was to add or deduct to alternate one. Okay?
Yep.
That number is 12,922 as a deduct. So that's telling me, I'm going with alternate one, I only got to take off $12,000. It doesn't say and including three.
You got this handled?
I do, but I want to make sure the board realizes, if you go with the smaller office, you need to still add $200,000.
No, she's going to go large.
I'm going with the bigger.
And it doesn't matter.
Now, it's a mute point?
Then it doesn't matter.
Okay. Barb, continue.
I'm going to make a motion to go with, what, E?
E.
The building.
Yep.
I will second that.
So we have a motion on the floor by Ermeling. She's recommending the exact bid, or the exact recommendation from the building committee, a 10-0 vote, and seconded by Feeny. Is there any discussion, anybody?
I want to make it clear, I did not vote for approval of the bigger building, because I think the building construction is excessive, by, similar to what you've pointed out tonight. I voted to send it to the board for decision and discussion, because there is no give and take at the building committee. That's how I, that's, I mean, I voted to send it to the trustees. I didn't approve the building to send it to the, to it, because I still think the building needs some things taken out. I mean, there was discussions that were had regarding the showers, there was, you know, and the maintenance of that. Same thing with the chemicals and, you know, even the manual wash. All of those things were discussed, but we never, we never got a final resolution to that. And I know Barb pointed out on the showers, who's going to, who's going to clean all this? Who's going to, what's the expense for maintaining it? Never was part of any of the discussions. It was already, it was already part of the design, and it was not going to go anywhere in that committee. So I just want to make it clear that I did not vote at that time to approve this. I voted to send it to here, for the trustees to discuss and determine what is necessary and not necessary in the building.
On the one thought, on the one thought about the showers, we're going to have to look at that. And obviously, we don't want to have them cleaned every time they get used.
Right.
We don't clean bathrooms or toilets every time they're used. So, you know, staff is just going to have to deal with, you know, like you're in a campground, you know, once a week, or once a day, or, I mean, twice a week, whatever, so we can deal with it, I guess. I mean, I don't, I still don't agree with them, but here we are today.
Well, I agree with one.
So, and they got really downsized, you know, and the fuel island's gone, and the wash bay is gone. So any more discussion?
So I just want to clarify this, the current vote that's on the table right now is the exact recommendation from the building committee.
Yep, the original, the larger complete footprint, the different HVAC system, the deduct for the automatic wash, and the two components for the shop.
Yeah, the lift.
The lift, the hoist, and the jack, and all that, safety equipment. So that's, I believe that covers it all.
And just want to clarify this again, the total amount for that would be 16.636787, is that correct?
Well, on the bill itself, I think we're only approving the 14 million, right?
Right, we're only approving the 14,372.
Right, because we're not doing the salt shed and all that.
That can be done at a later time.
That we took out.
Just wanted to be.
Oh, we, we got to do it in two years, yeah. So for a total of $14,372,787.
Right, so you're making, you're making a motion, what contract is being awarded to Myron?
And we're awarding this to Myron, little bit.
So I just have a, I just have a question, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, John, go ahead.
Okay, I just have a question. So are we going to send the taxpayers what their 20-year bill is actually going to be for what we're assessing them right now, because we're not allowing them to vote? Is that, is that what we're going to do? Or do they just get to look at it every year and say, oops, it went up 400, oops, it went up 420? I'm just confused on that part.
I think, as in the past, I don't think we've ever done that. And I think we'll have stuff on our website that they can reference. And, you know, as we.
So we're not going to inform the taxpayers or allow them to weigh in? That, I guess that's my point, I just wanted to make sure.
Correct, yes, correct, that is true.
Other than updating information after decisions made as to what the impacts are, certainly we'll update our website, want to send out a flyer, newsletter, we certainly got to do that type of thing.
First of all, it would be hard to send somebody something that says what it's going to go up each year, because we're going to have new construction going on. So that is going to add to the base, that will change what we're going. We're not absolutely positive what the interest rate is. And we can't be, because until we approve a bid and decide we're going to go out and bid it, we can't really say for positive what that is, so we would be giving them.
False information.
False information. And then if it goes one way or the other, they're going to be, you know. You weren't honest with me.
And we're only 30% of the tax bill.
Right.
So there's three other components to the.
And I guess I look at it, and with the heating unit and everything else, I, like I said, you had me convinced there for the smaller building, but then when you were talking about the heating unit and everything else, we're going to be, you know, there's not enough difference there to.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second on the floor, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can we have a?
Roll call, I agree. Roll call, vote, cheering?
Ermeling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
By now?
No.
White?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Ziegler?
No.
It passes 5 to 2. And thank you, everybody, as Mark said, a very lively discussion.
Spoken like a long-term politician.
I, you know, Mark was very graceful, because he didn't also say that I was probably the fault of all the conversations at the building committees too, so thank you, thank you for leaving that.
You were good comments, Mark, even though we didn't agree with them.
And we get, it's a special.
All right, forty-three. Planning Commission recommendations deny the petition to vacate unapproved.
Don't we have the two forty-two?
Uh, let's see, forty-two.
Yes.
Discussion and possible action on Finance Committee recommendations regarding municipal building finances and five-year capital improvement plan. Yep, thank you, Lauren.
I move to adopt the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second. Motion by Feeny, second by White. Any on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Thanks for the protection. I appreciate it. Let's see, number forty-three. Plan Commission recommendations to deny the petition to vacate an unapproved portion of Dominica Street right-of-way lane south of Mary Lane.
I, I move to deny the request to vacate Dominica Street per Planning Commission recommendation.
Is it Dominica?
Dominica. Dominica, whatever.
Okay, I, I just figured you'd be right.
You am.
We have.
I am, aye.
We have a motion by White, second, second by Feeny. On the discussion?
Oh, I guess when is, dumb question. Is there any?
Well, at, at.
Is there any rainbow at the end of this tunnel?
Barb was right, because she didn't hear some of the stuff that Planning heard, is we are gonna let the courts decide in two corners.
Okay.
And then Keith has already talked to Joe, uh, Musnowski, and, and he's gonna, you know, he can actually refile. We are gonna refund his five hundred dollars. You know, for his original deal, but to, to let him just hang there right now, I think he understands what's happening, because it is taking an awful lot. We had him at a table, and then they both backed away, and now we gotta let the courts.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna do it a while back.
Yeah, so we, we, you know, he had a nice conversation with Joe, and I think we're okay, so.
Okay, because I'm going, okay, now what does this?
Yeah. Did, did we approve that? We did not? Okay. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. So carried. Wow. Forty-four. Planning Commission recommendation to approve Tommy Dock site plan. New building at eighty-six oh eight Progress Way, project two zero two one zero zero four zero.
I move to recommend the Plan Commission's recommendation to approve the Tommy Docks at eighty-six oh eight Progress Way.
Motion by White, second, second by Feeny. Uh, any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Forty-five. ATV slash UTV road use request. Uh, just so you know, Chief called me today and said if he isn't here for that, he has no issues with it at all. And then I did read something from Andy Sutton that he is, would like that to go through also.
Yeah, I, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to move to approve, uh, opening those additional roads for ATV, UTV usage.
Uh, motion by Feeny, second by Minell. Any more on the discussion? Hearing no, hearing no more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Number forty-six. Two, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Whoa. Is that like all right now, or is it one should be twenty-two, or one should be twenty? Or, or should the one twenty, twenty? How about twenty twenty-one crack ceiling project?
There you go.
Wow.
I move to approve the awarding of the twenty twenty-one crack ceiling project to Thunder Road for a total bid price not to exceed eighty-five thousand two hundred for Public Works and Utility Committee recommendation.
Motion by White, second, um, second by Minell. Um, any more on the discussion?
I, I just wanna say, um, a, a big thank you for, uh, putting out proposals and bids. I really do appreciate that.
That is very transparent, yep. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Forty-seven. Twenty twenty-one chip ceiling project.
Somebody else take these, please.
Those to approve. Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Minell. Uh, any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Forty-eight. Twenty twenty-one GSB dash eighty-eight ceiling project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ermeling. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Forty-nine. Twenty twenty-one asphalt overlay project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by White. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Fifty. Ross Avenue Bridge deck repair project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Uh, second by Minell. On the question?
I, I just got a question.
Cause I have one too.
Can't we, do we just do that a few years?
Um, we just had a real thin layer. It's kinda like that, that non-slip stuff put on.
Yeah, we put like the polymer over it on it, so.
Oh, I thought you had.
I can show you a picture of.
I, I think the most important thing, everyone wants help, including me, because I live across that bridge.
Yeah.
Uh, Jen moved out, you know, she doesn't have to cross anymore. Will I have to drive to Clux to get home?
No, so the, the, the contract has a, the contractor has to put in a, it's like a, a portable signal system.
Okay.
So they will be doing the bridge, so you'll, you'll be down to one lane, but there will be a, a temporary stoplight.
That's no problem.
Maybe it was the old bridge, but I can remember them doing some.
Not too long ago.
Well, we, we, we did the Crossbeach route about six years ago, and let me tell you, eighty miles an hour, you know, on a lot of roads, just to try to make the same time. So hearing no more discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Fifty-one. Ross Avenue paving project, County Road X to Mesker Street. You take this one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, second, second by Feeny.
Too slow of me.
Uh, any more on the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Fifty-two. Crestwood Acres Construction Bid Results and Contract Recommendation.
Move to award the Crestwood Acres construction contract to Switlaken Sons and cooperate for a bid price not to exceed two million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. Motion by White, second by Feeny. Anything on the question? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Number fifty-three. Well, seven and eight. Design contract recommendation. Motion by White. Okay. You have one job. Second, second by Minell. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Fifty-four. Donation Request to Benefit St. Jude Children's Research Hospital.
Sean. We can do ten?
Uh, fifty-four. Well, I, should we just leave it up to Sean, or like we've done in the past, or?
Can I see that?
It's, um, they're looking for, I believe, ten passes to the water park, or four, or, or groups of ten, ten of them?
Yes.
All right, with the, you made the motion originally? Who made the, you're doing it right now?
Right now, yeah.
Okay, so motion by Minell for ten passes to our water park.
Second.
Forty dollars.
Second by Feeny. Uh, any more on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Question here.
I'm sorry.
Um, so, well, yes, and this is for the, uh, the donation request to benefit St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, right? For some reason.
Well, it's, it's actually for, they're having a blind volleyball tournament, and then they're, they're gonna have gift baskets to give away, uh, uh, from all kinds of stores, gas stations, food places. They came to us. They're, they were gonna have it at Wiggly, but now they're having it at Hutch's. I don't know where Hutch's is.
I don't mean.
So I, I, it might not be in Weston, but they tried to get it at Wiggly, but they're gonna have two to two hundred and fifty participants, and with that many at Wiggly, they just can't do it.
Sean might know.
Yeah, but it, it was actually a pretty decent read, and they're not asking for much. They're not having big baskets, they're just having.
Considering what happened last, I mean, considering the COVID stuff, I think it's a good idea to.
Yeah, I think so.
Keep it being used.
Yep.
Okay, this is done, because it's just forty dollars, but I, I guess we get these from these organizations quite often. Does that just come out of the, the pool funds, or do we, I guess, room tax, or what? I guess.
Well, it's, you know, Sean's gonna have to figure it out for finance on how that, that's gonna have to get accounted for, because I'm sure we have to account for it, right?
Um, I'm.
This is what I just think. Uh, I, 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 you know, I know that a while back, I believe the YWCA, uh, the YMCA approached us about sponsorship as well to monetary donation. And if I recall, this board also denied that as well, denied the request. I would rather do it where I would purchase the tickets on behalf of the Village Weston and donate it to them instead, and I would do that personally on my behalf, instead of us.
I did the same thing with the Y.
Correct.
And I, I just partnered with a grocery store, and we're on our third year, a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, so that's just what I would request, um, because I, I, I'm worried, and, you know, obviously, I'm a, I'm not a big, uh, you know, I, I, this is a good cause, but soon we're gonna start getting more and more requests if we, if we start opening it up as well too. So, um, if the board's all right with it, I would be willing to do that, because you're saying it's just like forty, what, for, they're asking?
Forty bucks.
Uh, for, for, or I would even make it five.
I just think that, I mean, you could all chip in to get people to use the.
Yes.
I, I think Sean's, I think, I think Steve's right here. I think Sean's point was to, to, just to get out there more, so people that might not be from the area but close enough to, to see it. A little advertisement or whatever, so, but yeah, we maybe have a little bit, we'll have to figure out if we need a little more direction.
We approve this here, and then you wanna donate an additional ten, I'm sure they, they'd accept them.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't donate to them already, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just thinking that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I guess, I just hesitateable precedent, you know, being in for that. I, I have nothing against this, I just don't want us to set a point to, uh, um, to the point where people, organizations go start requesting for it, you know.
There is a statement here regarding the, the partner committee is, goes on and talks about it that Fred Schuster signed in two thousand and twelve, so there's, there is something here that, you know, the committees had looked at and kinda said, okay, in increments of ten passes, so.
Now, I'm gonna start asking the question is what detail, what, what organization would be qualified to receive a sponsorship? So for example, what if I end up coming with a monthly event and ask, um, you know, I want a sponsorship of this amount here? Well, how, we're gonna have to develop some sort of guidelines.
For ten, ten passes?
Oh, well, well, for, for, and donations in general?
I'm saying for ten passes is what, there's a, there's a memo here that Fred Schuster specifically addressed from two thousand and twelve, the, the passes, pool passes.
Sure, okay, okay.
That's, that's, that's why, that's where I came up with the ten passes.
Got it. Okay, yeah. Yeah, but he has a good point, because we just went through this on the bench at the park.
Right.
That we need to kinda have a, a way to do this, you know, but, but, you know, I, I guess I didn't read this whole thing.
Yeah, no, I read.
And there it is.
I, I, I'll be honest, I didn't read that whole part either.
Shame on you guys. You guys don't read it?
Skimmed through it.
But that's where the ten, that's why I, I made that motion, because it's already demonstrated that ten is acceptable, and that's, if that's what we've been doing, that's fine. Now we have.
It's policy.
Yeah, now we have a reason to say yes or no to future things, but I think it's a good idea just to get the pool used.
Yeah, but they'll say, buy one and get one?
Yes.
No, that's what they asked. They asked for any combination. They would have taken, uh, uh, parties of ten, they would have taken a buy one, get one, and, but they asked for originally, because they've got them in the past, is the ten. But then they figured, okay, if I don't get the ten, then we'll do, you know, a ten kid party or this. They just wanted something.
Yeah, so I will make an amendment to the motion, um, to approve, you know, the, the pass that's been requested, but also, uh, but also with the contingency that we also have to develop a uh, uh, donation or sponsor policy in the, in the future moving boards, uh, after this.
I think that's already here.
We already have that. But I'm talking more about sponsorship, like for criteria, sponsorships, because I mean, the Y, the YMCA requested for a donation of a sponsorship a couple years back, and we denied it as well too. So we need to be able to determine what is, you know, what, what is acceptable, or what, what is.
I just, I, I think a government entity is not in the position to do that. A for-profit company is, then they can market themselves. Government doesn't have the ability to do that. So on that thousand dollars from the YMCA, or like the twenty thousand to Basil for Irish Fest, my heavens, we are so lucky. We didn't get twenty other requests for German Fest, uh, uh, you named the fest.
Irish.
How, how could have, thank you, Irish Fest. How could have we said no when we're already giving one restaurant twenty thousand dollars for that?
Right.
So I, we did the right thing by stopping that, and, and it didn't not generate twenty thousand dollars worth of donation for hotel rooms.
Right.
That's a really big deal, because hotel rooms is what drives the tourism. So, anyway.
So, um, that, that's what I would recommend, that's what I would offer.
Do I have to bring this back to the motion? His amendment to?
Yes.
We've got to vote on the.
Vote on the.
Yeah, we have to vote on. Okay, so we're gonna vote on the amendment.
Right.
Um, all those in favor of Yi's motion?
Did you get a?
Amendment?
Yeah, we would need a second.
Oh, we need a second first? Okay.
Yep. I'll second Yi's amendment to his motion.
So, motion by, amendment by Yi and second by Lauren.
Can you repeat it, please?
I would know how.
So basically, the, the motion would be is just to, uh, to, the, the amendment is to add on, um, that we develop a, um, that, that, you know, that we approve this, re- approved the request, but we develop a, um, policy, uh, uh, a guideline, a guidance on, or, I guess, yes, on who, on who would, on, on who we would donate to in the future here, just so that.
Okay, but isn't that what we have here? We, we're specifically talking not about ten thousand or twenty thousand to us, uh, different.
For giving someone something in terms.
Yeah, what we're doing here is giving something that we control right now.
Right.
And, and whether or not additional ten families go to the, the park to use, or to use their tickets, that's already something that was designed back in two thousand and twelve.
So, so we, oh, yes, let me just try to help here. So if you look at all the directors and all the things in our village, who can do what? Really, technically, Sean is probably the only one to be able to do something with passes. How about if we give him the ability to do ten passes five times a year at his discretion, he, he can do none, or he can do all five? Would that be the better way to take away all the ask and give?
Well, that, that's why I'm saying that we should, it should be up to, that we should develop a policy, and that could be the policy. I, I don't, I don't have a, uh,
you know, there's really.
I don't have a pers, uh, an opinion on what the policy on that is, but I just think we need to develop some sort of a guidance, because otherwise, we're gonna have somebody requesting for a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, and it's gonna start increasing more. I have nothing against this donation. I just want us to have a policy.
Right.
Okay, I, I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding something I'm reading here, but that they, we would give these passes so long as the school church special event is both within the school district and who have received recreation partnership status with the village. I'm sorry, it doesn't. They're not holding it here.
Well, but, but prior to that, they were always at Wiggly.
Right.
And that's why, because of the COVID.
Because of COVID, they're not.
They can't do it at Wiggly, because that's where they want it to be.
This isn't the first time.
Oh, they've been here, you know, I, I think since two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, they've been here for eight years.
But I think that points to Yi's amendment to his motion is that we need to have, this is, how many years old now, this particular resolution?
Long time.
Aye.
Maybe they should send it back to the park committee to review.
Well, I know, but now we're talking months, and boards are changing, committees are changing. I don't, I, I think the discretion to the parks director.
My question, I held it here. That was my.
Okay.
And, and, I just wanted to re, um, note here, I'm not denying their, uh, their, their, uh, requests. I'm saying that, yes, we approve that, but we also proceed forward with, uh, putting together a policy, an updated policy in a sense here, um, so that, yeah, and up, creating a, uh, updating the policy.
Okay, so motion on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so, so carried. Now on the original amendment.
That's.
That's amended.
Motion as. Motion as amended.
Motion as amended?
Yep.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So carried. Attorney referrals. Hearing none. Remarks from trustees. Hearing none.
Aye.
So I, I wanted to note the passing of Cynthia Deason, um, wife of Dave Deason, who was former trustee. Cynthia and her husband both worked to make the town of Weston become the Village Weston, and I wanted to thank her and her family for her, their work, and so I, uh, my condolences to the family.
I, uh, I'm, I'm gonna dovetail on that, because when I was at the store, Cindy, Cynthia was just a, a real character. She was just a lot of fun, always stop, always, you know, talk and stuff, and she was very, very lively, you know, Dave was kinda a little dry, you know, with a little bit of humor, but Cynthia was, uh, she was a real character. I really enjoyed talking to her. I, 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 I commend you for remembering to do that. Yes, thank you, Lauren. Sure. Barbara?
No, just on what Lauren said.
Okay.
You know, I was gonna mention it.
Yeah, that's too bad. Yi?
Um, okay. Uh, I'd act, um, I would like to, um.
Are you making this up?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
In, in an era of declining, uh, state aid and in, and responsibilities increasing, uh, I know that I've talked about this before, but um, I'd really like to see, uh, at least an initial discussion of what a partnership of Rothschild PD and Everest Metro might look like, as well as a potential partnership of Safer and Riverside. I think that we have some great personnel in, uh, in both departments, as well. I think that we have some great personnel in, uh, in both departments, as well as Rothschild PD and Riverside. I think that, uh, by combining, we have the, or at least discussing, a potential, uh, combination. We could address, um, we could address, uh, or move to have even greater relationships with our neighbors and have a solid, uh, bound, and have a solid, uh, jurisdiction, rather than some fragmented areas or jurisdictions that in just the flow of traffic are, seem to be a little arbitrary.
I guess, uh, a, a very excellent goal. Yi?
Sorry, I just remembered what I was gonna say. I just wanna congratulate, uh, Trustee Ermeling, uh, Trustee Feeny, uh, and oncoming, uh, 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 Trustee Zagami, um, for, um, winning their election, and I just wanna thank, uh, Trustee Ziegler for, um, his service to this community and to this village.
Yes.
Well, you stole my thunder, now I gotta think of something. Um, Steve?
I have nothing.
But, um, congratulations and, uh, and, uh, and thank you to the ones that, uh, that are moving on.
What about the discussion, possible action, President's recommendations?
Yeah, yeah, that's from one, so remarks from President, number fifty-five, yeah, oh, okay, I, I get it now. Uh, discussion of possible action on President's recommenda- recommend- recommended appointments to Safer Board and Commission. Uh, Lauren White, um, and, uh, only because it's, uh, it's, we actually have some time on this, but I want this to get approved from this board first. Uh, but Lauren White, uh, would like to continue, and I'd like him to continue, uh, as a director, he's doing an excellent job. Uh, he was part of the initial, uh, beginning of Safer and brings an awful lot to that board. Uh, when they also put on Fred Schaefer, he was also, uh, with Lauren in that, and so we've really got a, a excellent unit there now, so. Um, and then on the commissioner's side, we've got time on this too, but we have actually two coming up here. And, uh, one of them is gonna be appointed by our board, and then goes directly, and, and then the other one gets appointed by the board. So, um, and then I think we have, uh, Dave Phelps from the town of, uh, Weston, that's on, I don't believe he's up this year. So I, at this time, I would like the approval of Lauren White for the director, for the Safer Board, and Gene Jackin as a commissioner.
I'll, I'll second.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I'll make the motion, uh, to approve Lauren White as the director, and Gene Jackin, uh, as the commissioner.
As a commissioner, thank you. Um, so that's a motion by, uh, Zhong and a second by Ermeling, anything on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. The at-large candidate is, um, I don't think we need one this year. I, I think they do, I think they have to bring one in.
Well, in, in.
Okay, well, this is, this is remarks only, so I.
Oh, yeah.
But I can't tell.
You're right, yeah, we can't really discuss, you're right, okay. Thank you all.
Have other things that we can.
Yep. Alright, future items, uh, next meeting dates, uh, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Board of Trustees and Board of Review meeting at six P M. Um, seventeen, seventeen, I won't be here.
Oh.
So.
I'll get to the board.
Sorry about that.
Wow.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Uh, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Trustees Plan Commission Public Hearing for Schofield Avenue, Weston Avenue, I will be here for that. Uh, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one Board of Trustees Regular Meeting at six P M, um, Barb will run the May seventeenth meeting. And, and then I, um, when, how long do I have for a committee appointments?
Um, I think normally those come.
Right there.
At the next meeting.
So I, so I'll work on those with Keith, and if everybody would just kinda talk to me, and what, you have already, I think you have.
Yeah.
Um, I just remember we forgot John Ziegler, if he has any remarks.
If what?
If he has any remarks.
John, are you still on?
Yeah, I was here, I just figured you just skipped over me since I'm not on the board anymore.
But anyways. You have any remarks?
Whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, thanks, and have a good night, guys.
Alright, thank you, John.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, with no other planned business, is the meeting?
Can I ask one thing?
Uh, sorry.
Relative to the, to the Plan Commission Board Trustees Meeting and the public hearings that they're, they're planning to have them over at Weston Way, I think there's gonna be a little break in between, so we're planning to have some kind of, uh, some kind of food in between there, is that, uh, acceptable to everybody?
Do you know, like, an hour break, two-hour break, what?